Would someone like to make a motion, please, to return the regular board meeting to public session? Thank you, Ms. Lee Lamay. I'm very excited. I'd like to play a fair place. Thank you. Any discussion? Any discussion? None? All in favor? opposed? Mentioned? Motion carried unanimously. Good evening, everyone. I call the regular board meeting to order. All board members are present. In accordance with Executive Order 202.1, please be advised that members of the public will not be permitted to attend a board meeting in person. This meeting is being conducted as a webinar. The public has had the option to register for this meeting. Mr. Borenstein, would you please lead us in the fledge of allegiance?
Fledge of allegiance. To the law. It is reasonable, it is sense, a nation, we are, we must, we need to stop.
Is there a motion, please, to reorder the agenda so that 11A Superintendent's Community Update is held prior to Item 4, Public Expression, and approve the agenda as reordered? Ms. Lamay, thank you. Ms. Kavner, that's right. I get it. Any discussion? Any none? All in favor? Motion carried unanimously. Mrs. Carey, at this time, would you please give the oath of office to our acting superintendent, Dr. John McHann?
Okay. John. As I can see, you're accurate. You could, yeah? I, I, John McHann.
Do solemn swear.
Do solemn swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will face the leaders' charge.
And I will face the leaders' charge.
The duties of acting superintendent.
The duties of acting superintendent.
For the Williamsville Central School District.
For the Williamsville Central School District.
According to the best of my judgment. Thank you, Mrs. Carey, and thank you very much, Dr. McKenna. Are there any board announcements?
I have, I have one, but it's going to take me a minute.
I can come back to it if you'd like.
Thanks. Going through such a large leadership change is not easy for a school district. I would like to thank Dr. McKenna for agreeing to take the challenge on of being our acting superintendent and helping us to reopen schools in an equitable and safe way. I would like to recognize my fellow Board of Education members for their dedication and hard work over the past few days. We met twice over our Labor Day weekend to try to change course on the failed reopening plan. I would like to recognize the union leaders and principals who were so willing to give up their time to meet with Dr. McKenna to get working on a plan for our district. Some of those leaders even gave up their Labor Day to come into the office to get started on planning. I think we are in good hands and have faith and confidence that the new leadership team will come up with solutions and well-thought-out plans to help provide quality education for all of our students. It's unfortunate that we are where we are now, but all we can do is focus our efforts on moving forward and making improvements. I also want to extend special recognition to our Director of Communications, Nick Filipkowski, for being available over his Labor Day weekend to assist the Board of Education, as well as our district clerk, Lynn Carey. Exceptional work, everyone.
Thank you. Dr. McKenna, would you like to give us a community update?
I'm happy to give a community update. First, I just want to say thank you very much to the Board of Education. I am honored and privileged to have this opportunity, and I pledge that I work with all of you and everyone in our community during this difficult time to make things better for our students and all our families, our staff. I am committed to work with all stakeholders to make sure that we make the best decisions possible. And thank you again for this great opportunity. And I want to say I do have a couple of things I'd like to say about the opening of schools today. I wish I would have got a chance to get to more. I got to three schools today. And I'm going to make my way through all the schools throughout the week. Once I got to the schools, it was, there was such a positive atmosphere, it was hard to leave. There were so many smiles and so many good feelings. It definitely warmed my heart. I visited with the three schools this morning to welcome back students and to see the staff. I got to say I was very impressed with the opening. The buses, you know, I was a principal for many years. I got to say and give credit to Mr. Matursky and how he coordinates our buses and that. They were all on time at the schools that I was at. That's almost a miracle on the first day of school. That was amazing that they were all there. I was also very impressed with the temperature checks. You know, I went there today thinking that we were going to see, you know, when they put the hand scanners and that, maybe problems or issues. And in the schools that I went to today, I saw none. I saw kids going through. I saw things working. And I saw entrance that were, was organized, and I give a lot of credit to our staff. The plan took a lot of organization, a lot of planning to do this, so a nice job. It was very impressive. All of the signage across the buildings and all the social distancing that the kids seem to naturally get, you've obviously done a good job before this evening opened because you could see that so many of the procedures were already known by the students. It was very impressive. I saw everybody wearing their masks. I saw a lot of masks with a lot of decorations on them and all kinds of different things. It was fun. I had a lot of fun talking with the kids about all their different masks because they had so many different characters and so many different things on them. I got to see a virtual classroom today. At Dodge Elementary, I got a chance to see remote learning for first graders, and it was really a special thing. I, you know, those are these new things that were, our new world that we're involved in. And to see that and to see the kids engaged and all I could say is that this is new. This, the world has changed, and it was very positive to see that. I also, I think we have a video too that we want to play for the, there was a, I just want to say congratulations to everyone on a great first day and for all the hard work you did to make this work so well today.
Good morning! Look at this. Hey, good morning! Thanks, guys. Good morning! Hey, good morning! Are you excited about being in school today? Well, we're excited about having you. Isn't it great?
Most importantly, boys and girls have to fall and relax. We'll be all right.
Morning. You're good. Bonjour! Yes, bonjour! Good morning! One thirty-two. We've got one more to go. Well, I'm so happy. I'm going to do everything I can to help as much as I can, you know, whatever. Just what we're going to do. You got it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Dr. McKenna.
Thank you. It was fun. Thank you.
Dr. McCary, would you please read the Board's Public Expression statement?
Thank you, Mrs. Leguero. Welcome to all who have registered to observe this regular Zoom board meeting. Per Policy 1510, the Board has set aside 30 minutes for public expression, the time when we invite members of the community to share ideas and concerns with us. We welcome this opportunity to hear from you. Each person is given up to three minutes in which to address the Board. At two and a half minutes, I will notify you by interrupting you that there are 30 seconds remaining. At three minutes, you will hear me interrupt again, and thank you for your remarks. This is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting, which means we will not be engaging in a dialogue with members of the community this evening. Rest assured, we are listening carefully and we take seriously what you have to say. We would also like to ask that you demonstrate respect for us and for one another by speaking to the issues, giving us ideas, and sharing your opinions, but not engaging in any personal attacks. Thank you for your cooperation. Those who have pre-registered for public expression, I will call on you, and if there is time allowed, I will call on others who are interested in addressing the Board. Our first speaker is, I think, I forgot who you, sorry. Okay. Our first speaker is Alessa Kline. Is Kline there? Beth Ann McPhillips. John Katzkin. Ms. Katzkin.
Hello.
Yes. Introduce yourself and begin.
Yes, my name is Hannah Katzen. My question is regarding the remote students who have not yet had their first day. In this regard, I wondered what the timetable was for the remote start and whether asynchronous and synchronous teaching were going to be reconsidered so that we could start as soon as possible. And moreover, whether the future virtual remote instruction model will be a rehash of the current one or the previous one or the one that was just about to be launched and was not launched, or whether there will be reconsiderations of that model. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker would be Christine Sikorski. Please introduce yourself, and you may begin.
Actually, this is her husband, Jim Sikorski. My question is, until they get a handle on to the remote learning, if there's anything available like we had last year in March when school was closed, some sort of just communication to log in, a place to obtain some work so that we can keep thriving the education instead of not really having any material in our hands? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Daniel Katzen. Dr. Greg Nayer.
Hi. Thank you, Dr. Greg Nayer. I appreciate very much the Board giving us some time to talk today. I've had the privilege of watching the last couple of meetings, and I want to start off by saying I'm very appreciative of the direction the Board took things, the actions that the Board took, and the seriousness with which you've taken the lack of planning, which is evident to anybody who, whether you're an administrator or not. So I want to thank the Board for that. At the same time, I have four kids in the district, three of which had a first day or some semblance of a first day, much like Dr. McKenna described, but one of them did not. One of them is, has no idea. One of them has no schedule and no plan, and I'm still disappointed to know that we have no timetable for that, which I know the Board is disappointed and frustrated with also. But as a parent, I would like some kind of resolution in the near future to that for my child to be able to attend class so that the alternative is not that they have to switch to another medium, which they don't want to do, or that they have to make it up over a Christmas holiday or extra time in the summer, which is my fear also. So I know you're all cognizant of that, and I don't want to necessarily beat you all up on that because you certainly have your hands full. But I really would like some kind of resolution in the near future, even if that means partnering with an institution that does online school at a lower level in the interim until you can get the teachers you need. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Katzen. Next speaker is either Elizabeth or Jeffrey McClelland. Any McClelland's available? You need to unmute if you are. Thank you. Next is Gerald Federley. Or Gina Federley. I'm sorry, I'm Federley. You're not on the version that's compatible with what we're using this evening. I'm sorry. Next speaker is Jack Flick.
Good evening. I'm Jack Flick. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am a father of two Williamsville students, a senior at North and a sixth-grade special needs student at Mill. In order to protect our medically fragile sixth grader and our eighty-year-old father-in-law, we have selected the road mode option for both of our daughters. Because of the absolute disaster with the lack of remote instruction, our daughter has some regrets that she has chosen the health of her family over her education. This is not something that a child should ever worry about or even contemplate. I am kind of bothered by Dr. McKenna's letter yesterday in his presentation tonight. He's shown several areas and listed several areas that are going to be his primary focus. Let's be clear. In my opinion, right now, Dr. McKenna should only be focusing on two things. The safety of the students, teachers, and staff must be first and foremost. Immediately following that is getting the remote education program started. Everything else is still in work. Period. Full stop. There are many questions that went unanswered in the last few days. My questions, and I don't expect them answered right now, but are include the following. Are the new teachers for the remote option the same quality as the teachers in the district schools? Were they screened at the same level of scrutiny that you put through your normal teachers? Was the heartbeat of a teaching certificate sufficient? Where are the new teachers going to get their lesson plans, worksheets, tests, et cetera, from? Are they going to be partnered with an existing Williamsville teacher to get them up to speed? Will the AP courses be offered as promised, or is this another promise that's going to be broken? Are you hiring special education teachers along with the other teachers? These questions are the ones from other families that we've heard tonight. Need to be answered in some sort of live forum. At this point, communication to the families is absolutely critical. You need to reestablish trust. You need to give the families a warm, fuzzy feeling that you actually have a plan to get this remote school start, remote school year started, and you need to lay out a reasonable timeline for getting it done.
Thirty seconds.
You need to follow up with the parents on a regular basis with status updates on the plan. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jackie Dornier.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you for taking mine. I want to reiterate my concerns that others have spoken about, about the online learning. My son is a temp grader at Williamsville East, and because of certain choices he has made, he wanted to do remote learning, only to find out at the last minute that he wouldn't be able to start. I do appreciate your time and consideration in all of this, and I want to welcome Dr. McKenna to the Board as the acting superintendent. But I would like to know when it's going to, when his school year is going to start. He has ADHD, so he already falls behind in classes, and I don't want him to start the school year off as behind in his classes. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jason, excuse me, Jason Sensabaugh. No. Jen Burton.
Thank you. I'm the parent of two middle school children. As a family, we chose 100% remote for a few reasons. It seemed like the most seamless option in the event of another shutdown. It was at no risk for us to change our mind, and we did so because we could. We wanted to leave room for parents that can't work from home, or they might have had, you know, odd-aged children where they can't really be at daycare, but they're certainly not old enough to stay at home, like ours. The 100% remote option was never about a fear of COVID-19 for us. We were worried, we're concerned about it, but that's not why we stayed home. We realize that life has to move on, and as a community, we can do that and stay safe. Our district's last-minute changes were a case of bait and switch. We chose 100% remote so our kids would have certified educators, educators, teaching them, not me. I am not a certified educator. We were not able to get them on a plan today. We chose 100% remote because it would be the path of least disruption if and when another shutdown occurs. Make money other people on this call. We're parents first, but we're also business leaders. We have jobs, where several other families are relying on us to make sure that the doors open, the work still comes in, and that everyone's safe. We can't allow this to happen again, but you can't leave my kids out. I beg you to get a continuity plan together for our district in the event that this happens again. My business did so in three days. Why did it take your business several weeks to do that? And honestly, I don't really know that you have one still. I beg you to move quickly. My kids were lost today. My kids are pretty resilient. They were sad. I can tell you right now, their mental well-being is not okay. You need to move quickly to get these kids to feel like they belong someplace. I urge you to continue to listen to our concerns, but don't just act without thought. This has been terrible for all of us, and you cannot let it continue. Please listen to the well-thought-out ideas of the smart people that are taking the time to, quite frankly, do your job and come up with solutions and ideas to get our crap together.
Thirty seconds.
I'd like to thank, I guess, welcome Dr. McKenna to this new position, and I'd like to thank the Board for all their time this past weekend. I please, I'm begging you to listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burton. The next speaker, Jennifer Demansky.
I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jessica Swack. Please unmute. Introduce yourself, and you may begin. Jessica. Next speaker is Jonathan McDonald. Please unmute, and you may begin. Our next speaker is Juliana Gentile.
Hi. My name's Juliana. So I'm a student. I'm a senior at North. I was just wondering if there is ever going to be an opportunity for us to receive five days of instruction from teachers. I'm in the hybrid model currently, and I really would love to see five days of instruction. You know, as a high schooler, I've always had five days of instruction from teachers, and this is a difficult situation to be in, especially taking AP classes. It's hard to teach myself that, and I'm sure many other people feel the same. So I'm just hoping that the Board could maybe take that into consideration for the well-being of all the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Juliana. It's always helpful to hear from our students. Our next speaker is Kate Waterman Culpa.
Good evening, Dr. McKenna and the Board of Education. My family chose the remote model for our children for seamless transition to full remote, five-day-a-week education provided by Williamsville teachers and to protect the elderly members of our family. I echo the sentiments of those before me. I have a couple of questions and concerns. Can all students be accommodated in the schools? If not, why is the hybrid path the school starting and not a remote path? This is segregation. It's unacceptable. We were asked to make a final choice based on choices that do not exist anymore. Dr. McKenna, the letter that you sent yesterday prioritized a hybrid model starting. I was highly disappointed by this. I was equally disappointed in this evening's opening video, where, again, remote learners were not part of this conversation. I would like to know the timeline for remote learning to begin and the details of this path. I'm concerned about remote teachers as well. Who are they? Do they have the proper certification? And finally, the transition plan to full remote. What does this look like? Has the Board of Education and the Superintendent's Offices, Office looked at what this transition plan looks like, or have they spent all of their time on this hybrid path that not everyone's left it? Thank you very much, and I look forward to your responses quickly.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kelly Anlon. Ms. Anlon, can you unmute? The next speaker is Ann- The next speaker is Andy Kim. The next speaker, Krishna Churubu. The next speaker is Leah Rush. Next is, oh, I'm sorry. Are you there, Ms. Rush? It shows your microphone is on, but we don't hear you. I'm going to move on, but we'll come back to you if there's time. The next person is Lydia Ramos.
Hi, thank you for taking, taking me and allowing me to speak.
I'm sorry, we can hardly hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hear me better now?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry about that. Yes, thank you for taking me and allowing me to speak. I just wanted to say or comment that we chose remote, 100% remote learning for our two children. One is in elementary and one is in middle. And even given the delay, we wouldn't have chosen differently because we were able to stay, stay at home for work, and, you know, we didn't want to put our children or our elderly parents at risk unnecessarily. But I did want to speak in regards to the hiring of new teaching staff and hope that if the district, if this is truly a new day for the Williamsville School District, that in the spirit of this comment, in the spirit of advocacy and not necessarily activism, I hope that we approach the hiring of new teaching staff through a diversity lens and hire staff that will reflect the beauty of the diversity and diversity of our student body, because it's really important that our children have the opportunity, all of our children have the opportunity to see themselves in the staff and administration within our district. And thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos, for your comments. The next speaker is Mary Durigo.
Good evening, my name is Mary Durigo, and I'm the parent of a junior at Williamsville East. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you this evening. I wanted to start by saying that I appreciate the efforts that have been made over the weekend to restore a sense of community and collaboration in the district. I'm speaking to you tonight as a parent of a 100% remote learner and part of a group of over 40 other district parents of remote learners who have organized and published our needs and some suggestions aimed at resolving the delayed start of school for remote learners. We have delivered these items in the form of a letter that you should have all received this morning. Most importantly, we demand parity with the hybrid families for our 100% remote students. In part, my family made the choice of 100% remote learning due to health concerns of a family member who risks death should they be exposed to COVID-19. We also made this decision in the spirit of service to the community. Our family does not have the childcare needs that others do, and we wanted to provide a slot for a family that needed to send their child. We also thought that by joining the 1,300 grade five through 12 students by being remote, it would increase the chances of schools being able to stay open longer as the inevitable COVID-19 resurgence takes hold in the fall. I hope we're wrong about that possibility. Lastly, as everyone is aware, the 100% remote learning option was promised to have parity with the hybrid model. In fact, the community was told on several occasions during public meetings that switching between remote and hybrid would be, quote, "seamless" and, quote, "could be done at any time and as many times as we wanted." In fact, it was stated by Dr. Martzloff during the high school community meeting, when asked about staffing shortage, that if enough teachers could not be hired to cover both teaching methods, that everyone would go remote. Instead, our remote children are now being left behind with no start date in sight. To that end, and in the spirit of transparency, I would like to propose that a publicly visible tally board by grade and subject be posted showing the number of remaining positions to be filled, I see you, and the number of students requiring that teacher. I believe that this should be data that can be made available so that parents can make a more informed decision when the magic October 1st date comes around, and some people may be able to switch to hybrid. I would also like to propose that remote learning schedules be published to parents and students right away. We would like to see remote learning starting immediately for the subjects for which teachers have already been hired. We believe-
Thank you, Ms. Durigo.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Matthew Dates.
Hi, it's Matt Dates, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So I'd like to also thank you for making the move that needed to be made this past weekend. And I'd like to suggest that you're in disaster recovery mode, but you're not in it right now for just a past day or two. You've been in it since March, and the spring semester was an absolute disaster with very little teaching going on. I think that going forward, you need to look at how you are going to teach everyone with parity, as I said before. And the way to do that is the way that most companies around America have done it, via the Zoom meeting or in-person meetings, for those that have gone back to work. There's no reason why you can't set a computer up in front of the classroom, teach everybody in the same way, whether they're home or sitting in the classroom. I would suggest that you do that five days a week. The people that want to be remote, stay home. The people that don't, go back to school. And you adjust as you go forward. There's going to be problems as you go, you're going to have some technical issues. So you stop, you meet once a week, you talk about it, you fix them, and you move on. You're not going to get everything right the first time, and you need to stop worrying about making everybody happy. You need to make a decision and move forward, because right now, doing nothing is nothing. It's a waste of time. So I would suggest, don't hire new teachers. Put the same teachers in that you had there last year, have them teach everybody the same way that they've been teaching. And if you run into issues, stop and fix them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dates. We have Michael Lim.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Leonis. Michelle.
Hello?
Yes.
Yes. Good evening, and happy first day of school for some. Thank you to the board for taking action this past weekend. Thank you for reading the emails and listening to parents. Thank you to Dr. McKenna, building principals, and others who met over the weekend to start addressing immediate concerns. Thank you to our counselors working to put together student schedules. Thank you to our teachers for new plans for our students. I am hopeful that with the changes over the weekend, that this indeed will be a new day in Williamsville. I am glad to hear that groups are diligently working to address the gap of instruction for our remote learners. I do want to express my concern that as the model that may be instituted is not going to be the remote model that I thought I had signed my children up for. And I hope that if this is the case, that parents are given a few days to review and possibly change to the hybrid plan prior to October 1st. I know things are evolving and changing, and statements made last week may not be what it is this. I'm hoping with transparent and timely communications, our children are engaging with teachers and peers sooner rather than later. I'm hopeful for the future and that the district administration, the Board of Education, teachers, staff, and parents can all move forward together and do what is best for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. We have reached the end of our 30 minutes that have been designated for public expression. I will remind others who have signed up that we do have a second public expression near the very end of our meeting, and we can hear you speak at that time.
Thank you, Dr. Terry. May I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda items? Six, personnel. Seven, business. And eight, special needs and student activities as presented. Ms. Lemay, thank you. Mr. Borstein, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. I would like to thank the following retirees who have serviced the district. Elena Belia, District Office Instruction Department, confidential senior clerk, Snapper Park, for 31 years of service. Cynthia Buckley, Forest Elementary, teacher aide, for 26 years of service. Joanne Harof, North High School, teacher aide, for 11 years of service. Elizabeth Creeder, Forest Elementary, teacher aide, for 14 years of service. Carol Moretti, Forest Elementary, teacher aide, for 26 years of service. Laura Penberthy, Mill Middle, teacher aide, for 15 years of service. Alberta Peter Zakowski, Hime Elementary, teacher aide, for 26 years of service. Howard Hope, North High School, teacher aide, for 12 years of service. Laura Swiatowicz, Country Parkway, teacher aide, for 15 years of service. And Joanne Weber, Hime Elementary, teacher aide, for 26 years of service. Please join me in giving them a round of applause. Item nine is the approval of minutes. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the August 11th regular board meeting minutes? Mrs. Van Sij, thank you. Mrs. Bieger, second. Are there any corrections? On your approval of the minutes for August 11th, all in favor? Opposed? I will abstain since I have a capstone. Motion carries eight, zero, one. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the August 21st special board meeting minutes? Ms. Lemay, thank you. Mr. Biscalia, second. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, the motion is unanimous. Item 10 is the president's report. There are some events listed in the board docs. The opening day for staff was September 1st. We have a community forum scheduled for October 17th with more information on that. Important dates for upcoming events through Erie County Association of School Boards are listed in the board docs. Is there anything additional to report for ECAF? Mr. Lemay has submitted reports from NISBA advocacy council meetings. Mr. Lemay, do you wish to add anything at this time? If you serve for doing that and for the report. In board docs, there are proposed 2020 bylaw amendments and resolutions. Please review these as next month, Mr. Lemay will make the recommendations to vote on at the annual meeting. This will give everyone enough time to review and discuss so that we are in agreement. Does anyone have anything to report under this? Thank you. Here on page 10 of the president's report. Would someone like to please make a motion to approve the attendees for the Board Officers Academy, the NISBA Invention, and NISBA Alternate Voting Delegate as presented? Ms. Lemay, thank you. Mrs. Van Sij is the second. Is there any discussion on the approval of those events? Thank you, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. This time, board members, if I can draw your attention to our board goals. We've made a minor change to the diversity goal, we just added some language in there, so please draw your attention to that. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the goals as edited under embracing community and diversity as presented? Thank you, Mrs. Bieger, is there a second? Mr. McCa, thank you, is there any discussion? Thank you, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Also, I think we should take a look at the activities as well, and just go down them separately, just so we have all of our T's crossed and I's dotted. So on the activities, does anyone wish to add anything to those listed activities for our board goals? Just want to let everyone know that this is a working document, so we're able to go back throughout the year and pass it as. We will have a review with here, but at any time during the year, if you would like to suggest an activity, we can have a discussion with Mr. McKenna about seeing if that's something we can do. Great, so may I have a motion to approve the activities that go along with our board goals? Thank you, Ms. Van Sij. Mrs. Bieger, second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Right, so we are on IOMG of the president's report, and Dr. McKenna's adding our strategic planning update. Is there anything you'd like to add on strategic planning process at this time? I know we were interrupted with it, and there was hopes that we would be recompeting. Anything you have to add for that?
Yes, I know we will be recompeting soon. We've met, and we've started to review where we left off last year, because we did leave off quite abruptly. We have plans of getting back together with the committee. We just don't have the specific dates right now, but we have been working with getting those, getting back. We know it's important, and we're looking forward to getting back to that process because we haven't had a strategic plan in many years, and looking forward to getting that played issue.
Thank you. Questions for Dr. McKenna on strategic planning? And our next item is 11A, which is the class size report, sorry, 11B, it should be 11B. 11B is the class size report. In your board doc packet, there is information on the elementary, middle school, class size reports, and enrollment numbers as of September 4th. Dr. McKenna, do you have anything you wish to add on that information?
Well, these are the current as of September 4th. And as you look at them, the one thing that I'd just say is that all our classes are within our class guidelines, and that's a good way to start the year, and hopefully we'll stay within those guidelines. If anything does change, I know the principals will always let us know as soon as possible, and try to make adjustments and support our principals as necessary for the year. Because we know, we know numbers change, but right now, to start the year, they live within our guideline.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Lemay?
Dr. McKenna, I just have a favor to ask. I realize this year, the data and the summary is going to be ever shifting and whatnot, but I would appreciate it if for next year, we can go back to the detailed report. we can go back to the detailed report that breaks out the different classes from every single school, so we can actually see the full class numbers per grade, et cetera, et cetera.
You'll get that. This is actually just a preliminary report. This is just for the opening of school. They're reporting becoming, I believe, in December.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on to our next item. The district goals implementation plans. The board has received the 2020-21 district goals and implementation plans. Are there any questions from the board regarding? Ms. Lemay?
I wanted to just comment a couple of things. One, I liked the diversity committee to establish goals and stuff like that. That really jumped out at me. I did want to suggest just improving communication needs to include adding and reopening committees or something along those lines to help the academic year ahead and that sort of stuff to just keep us engaged in the community and stuff like that. Make sure that we get that 360 kind of feedback.
Thank you, Ms. Lemay. I don't see any other hands raised. So we're moving on to our policy updates at this time. This is our first reading. Is there a motion for the first reading of revised policies 6550, leaves of absences, and 8241, patriotism, citizenship, and human rights education as presented? Mrs. Bieger, thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Gorstein, thank you. Any discussion on the reading? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion, please, to table these revised policies 6550 and 8241 for a second reading and adoption at the October 13th regular board meeting? Mrs. Vanseis, thank you. Mrs. Bieger, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion to resolve the adopted resolution for the certification of needs evaluators as presented? Ms. Lemay, thank you. Mr. Biscalia, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Item 12A. May I have a motion to approve the budget transfer as presented? Dr. McCary, thank you. Second. Mr. Gorstein, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Do you have any liaison reports? Please unmute, Mrs. Bieger. The list of meeting dates are in board docs. The PTA, PTSA president list is also in board docs for board member reviewing. Item 14, are there any legislative matters that anyone wants to discuss? Thank you. There are no matters to discuss under curriculum, personnel, district facilities, and support services, and special needs and student activities at this time. That brings us to item 19. Does anyone wish, or does anyone have a request or matter to discuss under the committee? Thank you. For item 20, I'd like to thank the community for all their feedback that continues to come in regarding the reopening of schools. Each email is for every board member and Dr. McCann. Any other member of the board wish to make comment about correspondence? Thank you. We will now conduct our second public expression with the same rules as outlined for our first public expression. Anyone wishing to address the board may electronically raise their hand.
Thank you. I will continue on with the list as current. Michelle Yarrow.
Unmute.
Thank you. My name is Michelle Yarrow. I have a student at Williamsville North High School who's a sophomore, and she is a member of the hybrid group. What my question is, though, is why did the district wait so long to begin hiring for the fully remote? According to BOSIs, it was not even posted until August 29th for the remote teachers. How do you plan on recruiting quality teachers with the pay that you are offering these teachers, being that they're part-time and temporary with no real attraction to come into the district? And with a pay that starts below $30,000, it's just not very attractive to get very quality teachers. With six years of schooling, they all have to have master's degrees. They all have to have the same certification in order to work in a school. And with that kind of salary, it's not very attractive to really attract quality teachers. Also, what resources are being given to these teachers? Last-minute hires? They're just coming in? Nothing, no training? No information about how the district, what software they use, what books they're using in the classroom? Those kinds of things that need to be discussed with these new teachers? The support? If there's an easy transition between hybrid and virtual, how is that even possible with two different teachers without using the same materials? And what about the people that were called in and hired last week? Now that the remote was canceled, it's just kind of they're in a holding pattern? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yarrow. Next speaker is Bruno Batte. Next speaker.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is his wife, Laura. I don't really have a question or anything. I just wanted to address the board and let them know how appreciative all of us parents are of the action that you took over this past weekend to try and find a better option for all of our students. I know Mr. McCann was just appointed the acting superintendent, and I feel as a parent that have too fully remote students learning, I understand all of our frustration, but at the same time, we need to give him some time to work and come up with a plan that is equitable and accessible for all. So I just wanted to express my appreciation and thank you all for the job you're doing.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Smith. Next speaker is Robert Silverman. No.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Thank you again for what you guys are doing. I know it's a tough situation for everybody. I just also want to echo what others have kind of said. Particularly, I have three kids who are fully remote, and it would be nice if we can have some sort of online assignments like how you guys had at the end of last school year. And also, I think, like one of the gentlemen had suggested, I think we, just putting a camera in all the classrooms right now, is a very good idea for those who want to be remote and for those who want to come to school, because it's kind of hard to predict what's going to happen. Thank you again.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Ramchada, ready?
Thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I just wanted to congratulate Dr. McCann on his new position. And I, it's a great video that he just showed us, but unfortunately, that video just brought tears to my daughter's eyes, because they both are at home, and nobody's talking about remote learners. There is no reassurance. There is silence. It didn't matter to us if Dr. Marslof was there or McCann, because nobody was talking about remote learners. I was really hoping we'll hear at least some positive reassurance from him saying that you're working on it. We may not have a timeline, but we'll work with WTA, the board. We'll get all parties on board and we'll come with a plan. You don't need a date right now, but at least a reassurance saying that you're working on it. But all we get is silence. I don't, at this point, my expectations from everyone are just diminishing. I just want some answers, and I'm not getting any. I was a part of the group of 40 parents with Mary who sent the questions to you earlier, and some of the questions are really, really critical for us who's kids are at home. And we really hope you have, you at least consider those questions and think about us. There are around 1,400 students. It's not a small number, and we would really like it if you spent some time thinking about us, remote learners. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, you've come to the end of the list of people who have pre-registered, but we have not exhausted our 30 minutes. Is there anyone on the list who would still like the opportunity to speak? If so, we'll look at the raised hands and work through there. Okay. First name I see is Matt Lebo.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are. Go ahead.
Okay, great, super. Yeah, thank you so much. Actually, I thought I did pre-register. So anyway, I got to tell you, I am just furious, okay? Just furious. And these parents calling in on this side are way too nice. If you would delay the start for the opening, it would be completely flipped, okay? You know, at a minimum, we want AP, electives, and all coursework, foreign language. You're creating a domino effect for our kids. They can't take certain courses, and then they can't take the courses after that, okay? And when they get into high school, this is no joke. You know, we saw back in August, we were nothing but an afterthought, nothing. We're just pushed off on BOSIs, and then Scott, you know, said, oh, we get full five days, making parents who wanted five days in-building jealous of us, when really, it was all smoke and mirrors when we were getting smoke and mirrors. So we thought we fought and won in August, and then you took it all away, okay? And this is a mistake. This is a lose-lose, because a solid remote learning setup and in place months ago would have been a win-win. And here's why. Here's why. No one knows how cold and flu will react with COVID. People can do asymptomatic spread. You don't know who's in there right now asymptomatic. There's a rare inflammatory syndrome that can hit kids. People with pre-existing conditions, everyone knows. The long-term health effects of this COVID-19 are unknown. And I personally know a Buffalo school teacher who was in the social studies, and he's not an old guy, who was on a ventilator. He's a dad, and he nearly lost his life, and those kids would have been orphans, okay? So we talk about mental health. Well, losing your dad's also, you know, pretty traumatic, I think. So, you know, there's a good likelihood school's going to close again. And if you had that remote model in place now, you'd be ready. If you have that remote model in place now, we're less likely to come in. But right now, you're giving us this leftover afterthought thing here, which means when the October deadline comes, a lot of us are going to say, you know, I don't want to go in. I don't think this is safe. I think you're going to close again soon. But if I don't go in, if I don't send my kid in there, my kid is going to be stuck, and he's going to have that domino effect pile up on him throughout his education. So we'll go in, and then because there's more people in there, you can't do your social distancing as well. You're more likely to close again, and you will be less prepared all over again for distance learning. That distance learning model could be adapted to in-b buildings. There's a district in California that started it all remote, but then they're doing the same distance learning in California. Maryvale, the other school districts, are starting remote, trying to slowly bring people in. You could have done it that way. You didn't. So now, we want those APs, those electives, that equal coursework. You cannot just treat us as an afterthought, because if you close the schools and we stay home, we'll be stuck in that inferior model for the whole school year just because we chose to stay home in the first place. And it's wholly unfair. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Yes, ma'am, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, we need something now. If you guys can't do the job, you need to subsidize it out. No education is no excuse. Not having absolutely anything is not reasonable. And I don't even think that goes with New York state law. So we need something now, even if it's just the same old, same old. We got the summer program, which was not very good, by the way, but something has to be done now, period. Outside of that... Oh, I also wanted to mention that I agree with the previous gentleman on all of his points. And I wanted to mention that all of you in the board unanimously elected the previous superintendent, and I'd like that all the parents know that as a fact. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Robert Smith. Though I do believe that was Ms. Smith who spoke.
Correct, we already spoke. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hello, this is Eva Killian. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hi, I am a parent of a fourth grader at Forest and a sixth grader at Mill. So today was an interesting day. We chose completely remote, and I have a couple of concerns that I hope that the school board is able to address in some future correspondence. My first one would be, my fourth grader, completely remote, sat in front of the computer without moving today for six hours. I don't understand how that is equitable learning. I don't understand how that is equitable learning for our children, our youngest children, to be stuck in front of a computer the whole day. He got a 20-minute break for lunch, maybe 30 minutes, which was helpful. But that's not enough for our children. That's not what they experience in school. And I don't think that that is what our remote learning model should look like for them. Now, on the flip side, our sixth grader is happy and upset all at the same time. Happy because he wasn't stuck in front of his computer screen all day, but also really sad that he didn't get to start school. And listening to all of these parents talk about how important it is, I have never felt so nonexistent in this district that I actually grew up in and graduated from. And it's so hard as a parent to say your education isn't as important because you have to learn at home. And it's not a choice that we took lightly. This is a medical decision that we have to immunize compromised people in our household. There is not another option for us. So I really urge the school board to try their best with transparent communication. What are your plans moving forward? At this point, us parents are just lost. We don't know what the next plan is. We don't know what the next step is outside of, you know, appointing a new superintendent. We hope that that will help, but what are you actually doing for our students? Because right now, I've had to research New York State guidelines for what sixth graders should be learning and that shouldn't. I'm not a teaching major. That is not, yes, I see your hand, 30 seconds. Um, that's not what I should be doing. Unfortunately, I also work full-time and I know that I cannot provide the best education for him, but I know something is better than nothing. And I just urge the school board to be as transparent as possible with what are the next steps and trying to move as quickly as they can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Killian. Next is Jason Hicks.
Hi there, good evening. During one of the community forums several weeks back, Dr. Marsloff was asked whether he believed the school season would end the way it started. Clearly, we all, especially our children who are now being excluded from their education, hope that is not the case. Obviously, the point at that time was the question whether hybrid kids would actually remain in school for the entire year. His answer, and one which I unfortunately believe will eventually be proved correct, was flatly no. Given the increase in positive cases across national school systems that open earlier than New York State, the likelihood of in-person instruction remaining the norm seems low. I understand the desire and needs for working parents and those with special needs. It seems an enormous effort has been put into this hybrid model when it is likely to be scrapped for 100% remote anyway. The better path forward would have been to focus on the 100% fully remote option that supports the most students, whether or not remote becomes mandated. Additionally, last week, it was even noted that the hybrid may not even meet the mandated 180 days of education. I fail to understand how that and the situation we're now in was ever considered as an appropriate path forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sumitra Panda.
Hi, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Sumitra Panda and I'm a junior at Williamsville North High School and I'm currently in the remote model. So right now, I watched my friends in the hybrid model go back to school and begin their learning process. I went on WITS and I saw the lesson plans for my classes this week. Lots of teachers are beginning to assign homework assignments for this week already. Kids are getting their textbooks. As a student who is enrolled in four APs, I'm worried about my exams. AP exams are currently set for May 3rd through May 14th. Are there any plans for us to make up this lost instructional time for the remote students? We, as a district, we already start a bit later than many other districts across the country that were, and many other AP students. I've been in AP classes before where we were learning material up till the very last week because there is so much material to learn. And I really feel that the district needs to begin remote learning for our students as soon as possible so we don't fall behind. Additionally, for the remote plan, I wanted to ask if teachers in the remote plan will be experienced AP teachers. I'm sure as many students know that an experienced AP teacher can make the difference between what score you get on the exam and how successful you are in the class. I also want to ask if the remote teachers and the in-person teachers will be teaching in the order that the college board recommends. I've heard of many teachers who sometimes teach out of order. So if students choose to switch back into the hybrid model or back in from the remote model, then they would be missing out, could be missing out on units. Finally, I wanted to request that the board allow students who signed up for the remote model to switch back into the hybrid model. When I signed up for this plan, I, it was with the assurances that I would be allowed to switch back into the hybrid plan at any time with a seamless transition. But now I have my, I can't switch back in until October 1st. Right now, with no plan in sight for the start date for remote learning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sumitra, for your thoughtful comments. Next is Jackie Donner.
Hi, I just wanted to add to my previous statement. My son had requested a Chromebook and when I went to pick it up today, they said that they were out, even though I had requested it ahead of time. Also, with, you're just reiterating what everyone has said about the remote learning. But I really am confused why we can't do some type of instructional online thing where either everyone is 100% remote or at least the online kids can watch the classrooms via video. So I, as everyone has said, you know, I really wish that something is considered and put into place sooner rather than later. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Next is Julie Meyer.
Yes, um, I don't want to pile on because everyone has mentioned everything about this remote learning. I find it a little bit disturbing that we're still following parliament procedures. This should really be a crisis emergency meeting. And the opening video was very insensitive to the remote learners' families. I'm not clear if or why the district is still pursuing this total separate remote program like everyone has stated tonight. I realize there are many remote learners, but in most likelihood, as we have said, the entire school may close early fall due to COVID concerns before a separate program may be even implemented. It seems like Williamsville is trying to reinvent the wheel while Clarence Middle School and High School, which are larger per building in size, utilizes the same program as their hybrid plan for their students. Why has no one gone to that school district in Clarence, compared their teacher contracts to ours, and see why we cannot have gotten that accomplished? And they have live synchronous learning in the middle school and the high school. It is heartbreaking to hear these students call in here. As a former teacher, my heart breaks for my son, who is in seventh grade, and for myself. The hybrid plan and the remote plan should have been a parody. Students can easily share the remote days that they are home, three days off, and then live streaming the other two. The remote students are part of the original student body, therefore accounted for, are ready with faculty. There are now approximately 20 to 30% less students in person in the classrooms for teachers to teach. This allows for flexibility in pivoting if and when a full remote plan is needed. And it does not require all of this new faculty and more expense in teachers who are not, no one is comfortable with at this point. A fully remote program cannot be run by brand-new teachers. It's not viable. And I'm hearing rumors now that we want to put together like a patchwork plan before we can get this, you know, I'm hearing it called the Williamsville Academy of Remote Learners. I, I don't know. I, I'm just distraught over this. So I would love to also know if the board or superintendent is going to address this tonight because that's why we're all listening. That's why we're here. We need something. It's 8:30 tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. Next is George Demopoulos.
Hello, this is George. Could you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate all your efforts. I'm, I'm a sophomore at Williamsville South High School. And I am an old learner, but I'm completely fine with it. I, I'd just like to, um, know if you could tell your teachers that I've been talking to them. And I'm, I've seen all the schedules and the, the landing page. That's amazing stuff. Thank you for giving it to us. So I've been with my teachers, in contact with them. And I was wondering if you could, as, as the board, give them the power to teach me. Right now, I'm utilizing online techniques such as like Khan Academy and other established stuff. Teach me, you know, Algebra II, AP World, stuff like that. It's going pretty fine, but for how long, I'm wondering for how long it could last a whole school year. But I'm not really worried about that. I think we can, I think we'll be fine in the long run. That's just what I was, that's why I came. So if you, you could ask the teachers if they could have like the power to teach me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jennifer Bosia Smith. Karen O'Neill. Did call us Jessica Swatch. Let's see, Craig Swatch.
Yes, this is Chris Swick. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, great. So I, I have, we have two kids in, in Williamsville District. We have one in eighth grade at Casey and one is a junior at North. And they both have been for the remote, all remote model. So it's, it's obvious that there's a lack of teaching resources for the remote model. You know, our kids are in limbo right now. And I think you've heard a lot of concerns from the group here today, the parents. You know, we picked the remote model, my son in particular, who's a junior at North, because he is taking certain business electives and some college-level super classes to, to, that would get him ready for, for his senior year. And we were told those would be available to him in the remote online learning model. Now, with remote being delayed, my concern is that we're going to be told that those classes will not be available to remote. And like Sumitra said, who was very well spoken, and I commend her for speaking to this, this board here. You know, we, we, now we've been told we can't switch until October 1st, which is like three and a half weeks after the hybrid group has started. So I have this, this bad inkling, we're going to be told our kids can't switch over to that hybrid model and take those higher level courses because they're already three and a half weeks in. And I don't think any parent on this call, in this meeting today, will accept that answer. So I asked the board to make sure that whatever plan you have, make sure that you don't leave these students behind who want to take these more challenging classes. It's not their fault. If you have teachers who can teach those classes and those remote, are teaching them in a hybrid model, if you ever, and if some of the remote kids could actually do some work right now to just keep, do some assignments, that's fantastic. Challenge them with that. If you don't have teachers that are certified and qualified to teach those classes, then shame on you. We're really letting our kids down. And the kids like Sumitra and the other ones who've talked here, who really want to excel, and it really owe it to our Williamsville kids. So I would just, the other thing I just want to say is just, I know you're hiring more teachers for remote. And I just want to share the concern others had on this call today about making sure that those teachers are fully qualified and can teach our kids the standard of excellence we've come to expect out of Williamsville, Williamsville schools. Thank you.
Thank you. We've come to the end of our 30 minutes allotted for public expression. Thank you to all of our speakers.
I'd like to put a motion forward that we continue public expression for another 30 minutes.
Our favorite. In motion, carries eight, one. All right. Our next speaker is Patrick Alexanderson.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Hi, I am the father of a freshman in Williamsville East. My wife and I are both registered nurses, so we understand the gravity of the coronavirus COVID-19 situation that we're in. I was a trauma nurse for six years. And as a trauma nurse, what we learned to do was something called triage, where if you came in in a car accident and your stomach was split open, but we noticed you had a broken toe, nobody cares about your broken toe. We're going to pay attention to stop the bleeding and stabilize. What we have seen from this board and this school district over the past two months is not triaging. It's wonderful that you're taking care of the hybrid students and, you know, watching Dr. McKenna's campaign video at the very beginning, where he goes around and shakes hands and bumps fists and look at everybody's all happy, is wonderful. My son sat around the house today wondering what he could do to teach himself and what learning potential he had. Mr. Derigo and Mr. Flick nailed it. The downside is that for the past two months, to use the vernacular, the remote learning students have been the bastard stepchildren of the Williamsville School District. They have received absolutely no planning. All of the communication that has taken place from the school district has been about the hybrid model. Everyone is just touting this hybrid model. Well, let me tell you that my wife, my son and I are prepared to switch him over to the hybrid model. Let's do it. He will go to school tomorrow. Unfortunately, despite Dr. Metzloff's statement that that would possibly be a situation, Mr. Swatland has said three times in emails to us that no, 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 no. Well, the bottom line is that this board in this school district is doing a grave disservice to these students. They are not receiving education. And that you should all be ashamed of. I do see your hand up. I know I have 30 seconds. Every person who selected remote learning, selected it with the best information available at the time. They made the best decision they could at the time. Unfortunately, the information has changed. The plan should now be allowed to be changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jonathan Rich.
Good evening. How's everyone doing? Um, so I just want to sort of reiterate what, what several parents have said and what Mrs. Van Cis brought up on Sunday and what Superintendent Marsloff brought up on Sunday as well, which is that the reason streaming is, is not possible, the reason the synchronous model is not possible, is because the WTA contract does not allow teachers to be streamed to parents and to be recorded. So I would encourage the board this week, tomorrow, to work to get a commitment from the WTA to amend that contract so that we can best serve our students. So that, that's all I have to say. And I hope that that can take place sooner rather than later. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Miles Faith.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I would just like to build upon the prior comments from the parents. And I first want to And I first want to commend the board for making the absolutely necessary step with this change for the superintendent. I feel this was well overdue, and I'm glad that you made that. I want to urge for transparency in the steps, and I would urge that there be the opportunity to find a pathway to switch students sooner than October 1st. I think that's fair. That there be full transparency in the process moving forward.
Thank you. Next speaker is Greg Dutton.
Good evening. I'm Greg Dutton. I have two sons at North. We chose the remote model. I'm still having a difficult time wrapping my head around why it was a last-minute decision not to go remote, why we didn't know a week or two weeks or a month ago that this wouldn't work. The only real request that I have at this point is, I'd really like to be able to switch my sons to the hybrid model immediately. Because it doesn't sound like the remote model is anywhere close to working at this point. But I would also say that that really needs to, as a number of speakers have stated, that needs to be laid out very quickly because we're going to need that. And that's all I really have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Jun Zhang.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, this is Jun Zhang. I have two kids from high middle, four remote now. And my kids are really not happy. And I know that everyone's different. We choose full remotes because of the flexibility. And we were asked for choosing between the hybrid versus the remote. We were assured that we can switch anytime. Now there's no switch option available, and we feel we were cheated. And I think as echoed by a couple of parents earlier today, that we should really allow students to change the mode now in order to be fair. We did not choose like remote for this inflexibility. And I guess another question is, would school be able to handle like eighty percent or ninety percent or ninety-five percent of students in school? I know that the school right now have already handled like seventy-five percent. And with like only forty percent of capacity be used at the school, was that possible for allow remote students to come back to school? And if yes, we should allow them right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Arlen Warrior.
Hello, are you able to hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, that's excellent. Thank you for taking my call. I wanted to first thank the board for making the decision to take steps to communicate how important it is to be thorough and thoughtful. And I appreciate the steps that were taken after Sunday's meeting. I'm very proud to come to Williamsville. My students who are in Williamsville North were new last year. So they had a very good experience up until Corona. Once we went remote, it became apparent that we still had really great staff teaching our kids, and we're very thankful for that. In retrospect, I think it should be clear to more people that the wise decision in such a situation as the pandemic as we faced it would be to start remote because we ended remote. So that would be the most familiar transition, and it would be most wise for going forward with the potential problems that could happen very quickly after school resumes. I understand that not everyone agrees with that. I respect the difference in opinions. I would simply like to state that the idea that more people should see that I see it as a wise option to start remote. That being said, with where we're at now, I feel the wise decision would be for department heads to communicate some instruction immediately tomorrow. There's no reason why tomorrow, department heads cannot email or in some other method communicate to families that are at home what is being worked on in school. So if I'm an English department head, I can communicate to those at home that this is what people in the hybrid model are working on. You can at least get started on it. But I am very disappointed. I am very, very disappointed, livid, and angry. As happy as I am that he is appointed, I am disappointed in his inaction that Mr. McKenna has not reached out proactively and communicated to the families that were lied to about how this would start. Thank you very much. They were lied to about how this year would start for school. And in that truth, there should be acknowledgement. And I would expect acknowledgement, but more so I would expect compassion. And the simplest step, if nobody had any clue what was going on until Sunday when things didn't go well, they could now at least communicate through department heads to give us some instruction in the short term. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Delina Danlogich.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to be a junior at Williamsville North this year, and I just have concerns about AP classes. I'm taking three AP classes this year. I'm just worried because right now I'm losing precious learning time. And the AP exam is not going to move back. The college board's not going to accommodate to Williamsville School District because we can't start remote learning on time. So we're going to get less education than the rest of the country when it comes to APs, which is going to give us a serious advantage for the exams. As well as I'm also taking two half-year business classes in order to get CTEs in my high school diploma. And when it comes to a full-year class, the time that we lose two or three weeks may not be a lot. But when it comes to a half-year class, it's a significant amount of time, a huge amount of time. And when it comes to that, I may not be able to get a CTE. I may not get the same requirements that I would if I want to go into business for college. And I just want to say that currently, I really don't think that listing retired teachers and watching the superintendent bump elbows a student is my priority when 2,361 of my fellow students don't have an education. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Alan Drew Miaske. Alan. Danielle Meyer.
Yes, hello?
Yes.
My biggest concern that I've only heard mentioned maybe three times on this call, and that was in some of the community forums. I have a kindergartner and a sixth grader in the hybrid model, which I originally did not want to join because I knew that my students would not be getting 180 days of education. I was jealous of the remote students who would be getting 180 days of education. I am not satisfied with using attendance to count as towards the accumulation of 180 days, nor am I happy with the idea of requesting a variance that anything less than 180 days is appropriate. I would like to see a plan that at least offers opportunities for makeup even in the summer. I don't care. I want my students to have the time that they are promised. And I also want to make sure, my son is already at risk of falling behind. If he loses any more time, even within the hybrid, this will hurt him as he continues on. So please, I want to have the 180 days of education addressed, and please recognize that just taking attendance on the remote days is not sufficient. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Cindy Stover.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, everyone. My name is Josh Stover, and I'm going to be a junior at North. I'm choosing the option that's safer for everyone, myself, my family, our school, and our community by taking classes remotely. And I'm being punished for it with a later start date and random district teachers who are being hired as we speak. I will be getting an unequal and subpar education. Not knowing when my classes are going to start, who my teachers will be, or what classes will even be like is causing me, my whole family, and all of these remote students so much undue stress and anxiety. This is a stressful time for everyone, but it's just not fair that students going to classes in person are going to be getting a better education than me, who's choosing the option that's safer for everyone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Julie Meyer. Meredith Levin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Thank you so much for taking my call. Welcome to Mr. McKenna. We're really excited for a new chapter for our district and want to thank the board for making that call. We've been listening to the Zoom. We've been trying to join all the board meetings we can listen to. And there's clearly a common theme here. Almost all the callers this evening are calling in regarding remote education. We are parents of a third grader remote, a seventh grader at Transit, and a 10th grader at East. All very different schools, all very different education levels. And we all, of course, want equal opportunity for all of our children. Is there a possibility for the board to make a motion this evening to actually address what is left to do to get remote to happen and get our kids in a virtual classroom? Is there a possibility that one of the board members can make that motion this evening and actually address it? Because if you've noticed, all the callers this evening are calling, with the exception of two callers ago, they're calling about wanting to know what we can expect and when we can expect it. And I know I speak for, I'm sure a lot of people, we want to know what we can expect and what we need to do to put a remote program in place. Because again, as everyone has mentioned, there's a possibility that our kids are going to have to all go remote at some point. And we want to make sure that our district is prepared and then our children are prepared. We have a lot of anxious children here in our house today. I can't tell you how many times my seventh grader asked me, any news yet? Any news yet? Do I have a teacher? Do you know what I'm doing? Should I have all my supplies? What should I have? It's a lot of stress on these kids, and I know we can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kim Kerr.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, please.
I just have a quick question. My kids are in a hybrid. And without having a remote in place, if we were to all go remote, it scares me because the kids would be in different formats. So the hybrid versus the remote, they'd be at different levels of learning. And how you get them all on track is going to be impossible. Secondly, I have, my youngest son is a ninth grader at East, and he has an IEP. His IEP, I've been told today through an email later this afternoon, after school has ended, that his case manager has changed. So it scares me because if something happens, what's going to happen with those that have IEPs? It's not going to be fair for the kids and everything else. And I think the IEPs have to be looked at as well through this remote learning because if we all go to remote learning because of COVID, that's going to be a huge issue. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Kerr. Next speaker is Tom Fish.
Good evening. I'm a parent of two eighth-grade twin daughters who are both taking three high school courses. And I just wanted to say that my wife and I would like to say that this entire meeting is a slap in the face to these 1,300 kids in the virtual model. Showing a video about how great the first day of school was for the hybrid kids when there are over 1,300 kids that did not get to school today or get to start school today was wrong. The normal agenda should have been tabled tonight. The vast majority of people tuning in are looking for information about how and when our kids will be returning to the classroom. We chose this model on the basis of lies. We were led this way by a superintendent saying that if there were not enough teachers, we would shut down and all go virtual. We were told we could change models at any time. The board needs to speak to these issues tonight. If they don't, then how are we supposed to know that we aren't in any better place today than we were with Dr. Marsloff after he sent his email out on Friday? Good night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amy S.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I just wanted to say congratulations to Dr. McKenna on joining the group. And I certainly appreciate everybody's efforts for what you've been working on and all the extra hours over the holiday weekend. My comments basically are just that I feel like it's sort of a breach of a verbal contract from Dr. Marsloff when he had told all the parents that they can switch in and out of the models at any time that they wanted to and as often as they wanted to. I have a daughter at North High School, and she's doing full remote due to an issue in our household, basically, that high risk, so we don't really have an option for her. So I guess I'm sort of speaking out for the other families that would like to put their students into the hybrid program at this point. Because basically, like I said, it's almost like it feels like it was a breach of a verbal contract that was broken on our behalf that we should be able to get students in the school as long as they're able to fit in there with social distancing and whatnot. I know that that's an issue to try and accommodate that. But I feel for the families that just want to get their kids in school and get up and running because they felt like that was an option for them, and so they went in the direction they did. But they should be able to get their kids in school. So I just wanted to reiterate that and, again, appreciate the help that all you guys are doing. I don't want that to fall to the wayside. And I think that Dr. McKenna is a breath of fresh air, and I have a lot of confidence in him and the direction you guys will be going in moving forward. So thank you again very much.
Thank you. Our last speaker who has not spoken is Julie Meyer.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Robert Meyer. I'm speaking for my wife Julie. I wanted to start off by saying that I appreciate the board's actions in the past week and look forward to Dr. McKenna starting his leadership role. My primary concern is that I'm afraid that moving forward, if you allow the option for children to switch from the remote to the hybrid, that it will end up weakening the remote program to the point where we will no longer have a viable option should COVID come back, and we will need that option to move forward. It also makes the children that are in the remote program, I know, less urgent. Right now, there are 1,300 kids that need education. Right now, there are 1,300 kids that need education. If most of them go to hybrid and there are only a few left, what will that mean to that, their education? Clarence has had the opportunity to work with, to do a hybrid and a live synchronous learning, so all of their children are receiving live instruction four days a week. And I think that this is something that should be looked into. Hopefully that can happen quickly, and I appreciate the board's time and attention to this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We've come to the end of public expression, and we thank all of the parents and especially the students who were willing to give us their comments. Thank you, Dr. McCary. Dr. McKenna, do you wish to address, to address everyone before we adjourn to executive session?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much, Mr. Mcary. I want to thank everybody for all your honest comments tonight. And I want to assure you that we have heard you. We've heard your voice. I also want to assure you that we've been working very hard on this issue. And all myself and stakeholders, we're all last night and all day today. We'll continue until we get the right answers, which will be very soon. And we will communicate with you as soon as we have the right answers, and as soon as we make sure that we've got this situation to the best of our ability, we're going to let you know, and it will be soon, because you deserve it to know soon. So give us a day or two to work through a few things. We're going to make sure that we come out with an announcement for how we're going to move forward. But I thank you very much for all of your honesty. It's truly appreciated.
May I have a motion, please, to adjourn the regular board meeting and reschedule to executive session to continue discussion on current litigation and permanent matters related to the particular person? Mr. Borace, thank you. Mr. Monica, second discussion. Thank you, Alan, in favor. Motion carries in hand.